This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Please rise for the pledge of the flag. Are we in compliance with the open meeting law?
Yes, we are.
Do we have a roll call and verification of a quorum?
Commissioner Dux.
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle is absent. Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Luganville.
Here.
Commissioner Booth.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Bika.
Here.
Good evening. I'm not Chris. Chris is out of town, so I get a chance to try this out. Thank you. I have to turn on the mic. That's the first. Okay, first mistake. Sorry, but anyway, welcome to the board meeting. And we will have the public forum now. We have two speakers. And they may have four minutes each. Please state your name and your address. Mark Goings.
Good evening. My name is Mark Goings. I live at E17450 County Road V in Augusta, Wisconsin. And I'm speaking to the board tonight on... With concerns about Page three of the handbook changes. Item three where it says the board reserves the right to collect money related to professional development. That item that's...I asked Patty if she could call it up in the board. So it's the blue item there. And I did talk with Ms. Mark earlier today about this item and we discussed it and she does... And there is...it does seem like there's...that she's open to language changes, that sort of thing. Not tonight, language changes, that we need to have time to look at this more thoroughly. But the reason I wanted to look at that is for one thing, it refers to professional development. Well, we are continually training our staff. So that could technically could apply to PD Wednesdays or PD IP days. That the board could at the end of the year say, hey, we're going to recruit all those funds. There's also trainings that people go to where, you know, that a principal might say, hey, we'd like to form a team to go to CISA and learn about PBIS. There again, you know, that's technically a professional development training. And one of the things that we do very well here in our district is we try to do what's best for students. And so I would want to think that, hey, if at one of the high schools that they needed... That they had more sections for AP, you know, Calc. And the principal said, hey, would you be willing to get trained in this? That the person would think, hey, you know what? I'd be willing to do that. But I would hate to have it become an atmosphere of, hey, at the end of the year, I'm retiring and now I owe for my training. Similar like with our mentor training. If you have a senior teacher who's asked to mentor a new professional to take that training again, if they leave at the end of the year. And again, this does not say that those funds would be sought. But it says that it could be sought. And I'm speaking to this board. And as you are all very well aware, you know, we have a board election coming up. And so the board could look very different very soon. Same thing with administration. Now, in our collective wisdom, we may say we're not going to play it like that. But our handbook is...becomes the basis of future thoughts. And one other thing I would relate on this is in... On page 64 of the handbook, which is in...which is a section that talks about non-affiliated. So principals, directors, executive directors. There's a section, Section 3, talks about requirement to stay current or to remain current. I think it's important that our teaching staff also stays current. This section right here is in the teaching section. Which is another oddity of this. Say if an executive director brought a team of three to go to a training in, you know, Chicago on school safety. At the end of that year, if they all left, the only people that would be subject to potential penalty would be the teaching staff. To me, that seems quite odd. I ask that the board pull that one item from tonight's discussion. So we can look at this because ultimately, in the big scheme of things, we need to grow together. Because that's what benefits our students most. Thank you very much.
So let's name that right now so we can pull it when we get to it. So it's page three. And what item is that? Number three. Thank you, Mark. And the next person to speak is Dan Wilson.
Good evening, everybody. Dan Wilson, 3753 Patton Street, Eau Claire. I just want to take a couple minutes of your time tonight to address the insurance bid that was approved at the last meeting. It was stated that the increase of staff would be minimal, ranging from an annual increase of $36 for a single to $120 for a family. It was also stated that the deductible will be rising to $4,000, $8,000 from $3,000, $6,000. What wasn't mentioned, or mentioned clearly, was that that increase of $2,000 in deductible would fall solely on the employee's responsibility. In the past, we've had the bridge that shared the deductible cost 50/50. But to my knowledge, the bridge is not increasing to cover the difference in deductibles. I may be wrong on that, but that was my understanding from the presentation, that the bridge was going to stay the same. The deductibles went up $2,000. So I just wanted to point out that that increase in cost to an employee could be far more than the $36 and $120 when we look at the increase in deductible. Lastly, I just kind of want to express my frustration with the new process of the insurance bid approval. I've been on the Insurance/Holistic Committee, to my recollection, close to 12 years. That's a lot of time and effort that I've put in to that committee to kind of make sure that all the ideas are explored, all the thoughts are there to help reduce costs across the board. This year, that process did not happen and the employee's voice in this insurance process was not included. The first time, as a committee member, the first time I saw the numbers was when they were presented here at the board, two weeks ago. So just personally, I just wanted to express a little frustration of the new bid process. And hopefully going forward, that's something that can be looked at to re-change that process going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Hardabek, may we have your report?
So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. On March 28, there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee at 11:30 a.m. And on March 29, there'll be a meeting of the Demographic Trends Committee at 4:30. Both of those meetings will take place in the Administration Building. On April 2, Policy and Governance Committee will meet at 8:45 a.m. in the Administration Building. And there will be a regular meeting of the Board of Education on...at 7:00 p.m. that evening at the Administration Building. Then on April 3, there is a meeting of the Parent Advisory Council. That's at 7:00 p.m. On April 4, there's a meeting of the Budget Development Committee. And that takes place at 11:30 a.m. On April 5, there are the Golden Apple Awards, which are 5:30 p.m. at the Wildridge Country Club. And on April 16, there's another meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee, followed by a school board meeting later that evening at 7:00 p.m. Those meetings take place in the Administration Building. So, March 9, there was an amazing concert at North High School. And it was performed by the Adaptive Music Class. And several of us were able to watch the performance, but some of us were not able to attend, especially board members. So we have just a little preview of that concert for you. And Patty is going to run the slideshow for you.
Well, I'm already teared up. Because I was there and I saw lots and lots of smiles. And I'm a musician and I know how hard it is to do everything together. And they did it together. They ended on time. They started on time. They were smiling. And Shawna, I can't think of her last name. Yeah, she did a great job. And built on what Lynda Johnson had done so many years. So it was exciting, folks. If you get to hear another one of those, just go. The most...one of the most exciting things too were the other students in the high school. They were...the auditorium was filled. And every time anybody said anything or performed anything, the applause was ample. And just reinforcing those kids, so...bravo, North High. Okay.
So thank you. I couldn't have said it better. I was hoping we'd get a little snippet of the performance, but you could see the preparation that went into it. They practiced for almost a year to put their concert on, so a lot of hard work and good work there. So leaving something so inspirational to talk once again about school safety is not the kind of transition that I like to make in these kinds of reports. But, you know, as reported in the media last week, a group of students at Memorial made a threat to the school staff and students. And here's what we know to this point. Four students, three males and one female, all 15 years old, were apparently planning an alleged attack through Facebook Messenger social media application. And this app is a private messaging application that allows individuals to converse with another person or groups of other people. And through a group message that spanned many days, there were discussions regarding the date of the event that would take place, some specific statements related to their plan, and photographs of firearms. And according to the Eau Claire Police Department, the guns in the photographs were real and the students had access to them. School administrators learned of the messages from a parent of a student who was aware of the messages. And the administrators at Memorial immediately contacted police. Working together, school administrators and police investigated during spring break and took legal action with the students. And at this point, it is a police matter. I think it's, once again, important to stress that everyone in the community to know that we take all threats seriously. And we rely on the Eau Claire Police Department to advise and assist us in helping to confront threats and to maintain the safety of our students and staff. As in other recent incidents, we learned of this latest threat through a student who thought something was suspicious and told an adult who passed the information on to those who had the authority to investigate it. And we are grateful to this family for coming forward because, and especially to the student, because it takes a lot of courage to come forward. We since learned that other students may have known about the messages and did not report them. And this behavior is just as disturbing as hearing about the threats themselves. We can only ask ourselves what might have happened had someone failed to report this incident. So we're once again asking all families and all in the community to help us. We're asking parents to please continue to talk to their children about being alert to anything that seems suspicious or out of the ordinary. And to really think about whether something is going on at school that adults need to know about, or something that's going on with other students that adults can help with. I think we have to let our students know that it's not only okay, but that it's important for them to talk to a trusted adult about what they are seeing at school. That we all share a responsibility to keep ourselves and others safe. It's been my experience with students who are considering any kind of violence or action or some type of dramatic step, that they almost always confide in someone else about their intentions. So it's important that when this happens with students, that they come forward and tell us about this. And it's also important that students understand the consequences that they might face when they make threats to other students or to the school. In the short term, making threats can result in an arrest, expulsion from school, sometimes even imprisonment. In the long term, students may not be allowed to complete their education, may not be eligible to hold certain jobs, or might even lose their right to vote. It is critical that students understand that making a threat is nothing to play with or to joke about. And this is something that our staff continues to stress with students. We want families to know that if their students are fearful about going to school or are showing signs of distress, such as sleeplessness, lack of appetite, acting out, or a kind of a general overall sadness, that parents and families can contact their principals for advice and support. We want to know our students' concerns so that we can provide help to them to be healthy and safe. And we also want our families to feel free to contact me or school board members personally if they have questions, concerns, or ideas to share. And once again, I find myself in the place of saying that as a community, we're all in this together. And we are deeply grateful for the help and the advice and the communication that we've received from the police department, from our staff, from our families, and especially from our students. So I guess we're living in uncertain times. We want to be able to reassure families and students and staff that they are safe in our schools. This is a team effort and we all have to be vigilant and alert.
Thank you, Dr. Hardabek. Chris Hamburg Boyle, the president of the board, has sent me her report. And she has a lot in there. She said she just wanted to take a few minutes to report a few points taken from this year's 97th Annual State Education Convention. I thought we had already done some of this, but she...I talked to her today and she said, no, we hadn't done this. So it's good to review some of what we learned in January. Our board agenda with closed sessions, meetings, and work sessions has been nonstop since Joe Catherine and I attended the conference in January. Mary Ann, Jim Schmidt, and Patty Iverson attended as well. Repeatedly, sessions called on school leaders to rethink our schools in terms of how rapidly our world is evolving. We were challenged to continually assess how we develop and support learners who will thrive in our ever-changing world. Dr. Bill Daggett, founder and chairman of the International Center for Leadership in Education, said that schools must change to meet the demands of the Fourth Industrial Revolution that the world is entering into. Constant rapid advances in technology, in particular robotics, biomedical systems and nanotechnology are making jobs and whole occupations obsolete. He said that a rapid change in the workplace is beneficial to emphasize skills like critical thinking, creativity, and problem solving, superseding teaching and testing students on facts and figures. You need knowledge and how to apply it. The ECASD is well poised for this. One other session to highlight is good practices are for good students. Research shows that board governance and consistent policymaking translates into meaningful student gains. In a series of studies on school boards and their members, University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee professor Douglas Erkey and UW Oshkosh professor Michael Ford found that adherence to a governance model or philosophy over time allow consistent policymaking and policy alignment with school staff that translates into real student gains. The ECASD school board is presently on the governance journey and will be working within our Policy and Governance Committee to tie down all the moving parts into a consistent way of doing business. Along with the completion of our board handbook, new members coming on the board should find the transition quite easy and accommodating. Hard work on this will take place over the next several months. The board's recent self-evaluation pointed in this direction as well. Are there...we have a school board election on Tuesday, April 3. So I want to remind you of that and introduce any of those who are running for school board. We have three incumbents, Lori Bika, Joe Luganville, and Eric Torres, who are running for reelection. Is Lori Klinkhammer here tonight? Joshua Clements? Tim Norden. Tim, stand up just please, so people can see you. And John Pliwa. They are also running for school board. Thank you, Tim. We thank you for coming and for running for school board. The election, as I said, is Tuesday, April 3. Board members need to know that there is a new board member meeting hosted by WASBE on Tuesday, April 17, sorry, April 17, in Duran, from 7 to 9 p.m. We have a tradition of trying to get all of our board members to attend that with incoming board members. So if you can make it, please let Chris know. On May 21, from 1 to 6, the Blue Ribbon Commission on Public School Funding will be at CISA 11 in Turtle Lake for a hearing. It is the closest that the panel will be to Eau Claire. Now is the time to plan your attendance. It is a school board meeting night, so we might think about changing our meeting or making sure we go early and get signed up to testify with plenty of time to get back to Eau Claire. I think she's already signed me up, even though I'm not going to be on the board after April. But I'm happy to go. So please let Chris know your thoughts on this and if you can testify. And she will help you prepare. And any staff or administration are welcome to come too. She said, I'm letting you know now, so we have plenty of time to plan. In 1971, the National Association for the Education of Young Children established the Week of the Young Child, recognizing that the early childhood years, birth through age eight, lay the foundation for children's success in school and later life. It is the time to plan how we, as citizens of a community, of a state, and of a nation, will better meet the needs of all young children and their families. This year, it is April 16 to 20. There will be opportunities all during the month of April that will highlight our amazing early childhood community. Chris will keep the board posted on those opportunities by putting them on our Community Connection Google Doc. That's the end of the president's report. So we thank Chris for her wonderful work and having more data for us, even though she can't be here. We'll have the student representative report and I think Lauren's going to go first tonight.
Yeah, good evening. Obviously, it's been a while since the last board meeting and a lot has happened in that time. But I'd like to highlight the success that the national walkout was on Wednesday, March 14. At Memorial, the walkout was led by student leaders Soraya Whitaker and Violet Kilmorey, who eloquently explained the purpose and significance of the walkout, the principles of peaceful protest. They honored the lives lost and inspired students to continue speaking out about what they feel passionately about. There was a strong community presence at the walkout and students who participated really appreciated the community's support. And as you all know, there was another very real threat posed towards Memorial High School for this Monday, today. But thanks to the actions of that student and their parents, law enforcement, and other school officials, Memorial was a safe place for students to attend today. And with that in mind, I support the drafted letter to parents on school safety. I think it's important that they know everything's being done, that can be done, to keep students safe at school. And I think one of the most important things we can do is, as Dr. Hardabek said, is continue to report suspicious and concerning behaviors because obviously that's what saved lives today. And in lighter news, I was excited to see that the academic recognition system was on the agenda for tonight. So it's exciting to see that begin to move forward. So that concludes my report.
Good evening. Just coming up, I guess, a couple of meetings left for us as student representatives. So the one thing we're hoping to do lastly is tackle the teacher evaluation stuff that we brought up earlier in the year. And I think through being with Mr. Schmidt and Dr. Bika, we're going to look into that more in the weeks to come. As a student rep, I feel, or I believe that I must feel strongly about the topic of student safety. I hope that with the recent threats of Memorial, there can be some sort of designated time, whether it's a homeroom, an English class, or a study hall, to have an open dialogue between... between students and teachers. I hope, I would hope that Dr. Hardaback's list of potential ramifications of making a threat would be shared with the students in an effort to put an end to any thoughts of making such a threat, whether it's a joke or not. I believe that this would also be beneficial to ease the tenseness that is currently in the student body in Eau Claire schools. And one more thing, I think if people who were on the board last year, I made a, I had a, I put a survey out last year, and I asked board members for questions. I'm going to do that again this year, me and Lauren are going to do that together. So if anybody has any questions, I'll send an email again this week, but if anybody has any questions they'd like to ask, reply to that email. Thank you.
Thank you. Your, your work this year has been wonderful. We really appreciate all the things that you see from your own perspective and bring them to the board. Thank you so much. Now we'll go to committee reports, and I'll call on Erin Harder, Commissioner.
Good evening. The Budget Development Committee met to continue the discussion on OPEB. Recently, in the, that was our primary topic, and that conversation is continuing. We're having our advisor, Lynda Mont, will be coming to speak to us this Wednesday, March 28th, 11:30, I think is the, yeah. With what we, what may be a final pass at this before we bring a recommendation to the full board. So that's, that's this Wednesday. And that's, that's the main thing that's happening with budget.
Do you want to go ahead and give a report on LEAP?
Sure. And so the other committee I'm on is LEAP. And at, at our, our March meeting, which, which happened last week, LEAP finalized a, a proposed action plan for moving forward. We've been sort of reviewing LEAP's role in the district at a kind of a high level over the last several weeks. My understanding is the executive team has a copy of, of that proposed action plan, and we're working to get a meeting with the exec team to provide some feedback on that plan. Assuming that all happens in time, then we're aiming to, to present some recommendations and some options to the board for moving forward with LEAP on April 16.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lugenville, would you care to give a report on the Policy and Governance Committee?
Certainly. We met this morning, and we went over finalizing our draft of Policy 445 on law enforcement officials and school resource officers. So we'll have that tonight for a discussion and possible first reading. And we also discussed some revisions to the Facility Use Agreement, which we'll be bringing to a future board meeting. And I believe it also has to go to Budget Development first, too, for another change. And future meetings, some of the things that we're going to be talking about are looking back at our discipline and positive behavior interventions policy, as well as looking at reviewing policies and protocols on school entrances. We just received a policy brief from the School Board Association about that with some recommendations, so.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our legislative update and Lugenville as well.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of updates for you. We'll start at the federal level about the things that impact our schools. Last week on Friday, Congress approved a $1.3 trillion federal spending bill that continues the, fund the federal government for the remainder of the 2018 budget year. What's notable, what's notable for schools is it boosts investment in student mental health, increasing funding by about $700 million for a new grant program that schools can use for violence prevention, counseling, and crisis management. So what this will look like is grants will be made available through the Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services, COPS, and the Bureau of Justice Assistance, the BGA, and they'll be awarded to local school districts for what they're calling evidence-based school safety programs. So that may be something to, of school districts and the state look at. The new spending legislation also does increase spending at the U.S. Department of Education by 2.6 billion, and that includes increased funding for IDEA, special education, Title I, and Title IV block grants. At the state level, Governor Scott Walker signed a package of school safety provisions into law just a few days ago. The centerpiece of the plan is a $100 million grant program for school districts to pay for things like increased safety-related facility upgrades and increased staff training. The package also includes some new mandates, which are not funded, but therefore, increased school safety plans and increased reporting mechanisms to law enforcement by school staff who hear students make threats of violence in or targeted at a school or school event. As far as school funding and that advocacy, as I think you mentioned, the Blue Ribbon Commission is not coming to Eau Claire sadly, they're going to Turtle Lake. You know, we're the eighth-largest district, so I think the only reason that they wouldn't come here is because they're scared of us a little bit, but that's okay. But also-
I thought the same thing.
Yeah. But at the state level, there are some other comprehensive gun control and gun safety measures that are also currently in the legislature, but they're not gaining traction at this time. Last week, there were efforts to add a 48-hour wait time on firearm purchases and an attempt to ban the purchase of firearms for all people who've been convicted of domestic violence, and those are both voted down. But beyond that, many of you have heard of the March for Our Lives, I think all of us have, and the March for Our Lives was led by the students and survivors of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas shooting, but also students from across the country. And we have a number of students from Eau Claire who have been, were at marches in Minneapolis, Milwaukee, Madison. I think there are a few right now who are still doing some activism this week, I think on a march to Janesville, to Paul Ryan's office. But I would encourage you all to check out marchforourlives.com to learn more about what these students are asking for. They have five policy proposals right on the front of their website, and you just click right there, and they're very basic, very straightforward, and I hope that we take them seriously, what they're saying.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Now we move to the Consent Resolution Agenda, and one thing has been removed from the agenda, and that is the 6.12, the CISA contract, which will be on for the next board meeting, which is next week already. Let's see, did I say, do I hear a motion? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for 6.2 minutes of February 21, 2018. 6.3 minutes of closed session, February 21, 2018. 6.4 minutes of March 5, 2018. 6.5, oh, that was four. 6.5, February 2018 financial report. 6.6 minutes of closed session, March 5, 2018. 6.7 gifts in the amount of $19,862.75 for the period of February 1, 2018, through February 28, 2018. 6.8, payment of all bills in the amount of $8,028,385, and net payroll in the amount of $3,596,074.87 for the period of February 1, 2018, through February 28, 2018. 6.9, human resources employment report. 6.10, employee handbook modifications.
Pull that.
Okay. 6.11, substitute employee contract. 6.13, 2018-19 dental insurance rates. 6.14, referendum project bids. 6.15, five-year capital plan bid. Do I hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Bika, second?
Second.
Commissioner Harder. Let me go back to the employee handbook.
We can vote on that.
Oh, we can vote on, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. And we'll go back to the employee handbook modifications. Did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I, I just thought, you know, given Mr. Goings' comments, it'd be good for the board to have a conversation about that and maybe see clarification. I know I would maybe like a little clarification, and my inclination is to leave the, the language as it is right now, but ask for the Handbook Committee and employee groups to meet as soon as they can to update the language and, and make it more specific, and then bring it back to.
Do you want to comment? Ms. Marx, shall we send it back to the-
I think that Commissioner Lugenville's recommendation is fine. We'll take it back to the ERC and, and look at the points that were raised and see if there's any modification that's needed, then bring it back to the board.
Can I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Commissioner Harder, second. Commissioner Lugenville. So the employee handbook modifications will be reviewed again by the committee. Okay, thank you. Now we will consider a resolution-
We need to vote.
Oh, forget those things. I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to send the employee handbook back to the committee for review, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And now, Dr. Hardaback has a special recognition.
So from time to time, we have administrators who transition to different jobs, or they transition to retirement, and always take it as an opportunity to recognize their service to the district. And tonight, we have a principal who's making a transition back to the classroom as a teacher. Rob Majewski, where are you? I, you want to stand up, please? So Rob has decided that to leave the principalship, he's going to go back to his first love, which is teaching, and he will be missed at Northwoods. He's been the principal there since 2010. When he completes his service there in June, he will have been there for eight years, right? So Rob is moving to be a third-grade teacher at Putnam Heights, and I know that Principal Kohler is delighted to have you there and is looking forward to your joining the faculty. Rob started at Northwoods as a, I think, a fourth-grade teacher, right, at Locust Lane? At Locust Lane. And then continued there at Locust Lane until he became the principal. He earned his bachelor's degree at UW Lacrosse and his master's degree from the University of St. Thomas. So as he makes his transition to the classroom, I think that he's really returning to his, as I said in the beginning, to his first love. And, you know, I can tell you, in working with Rob for the past six or seven years, one of the things that I've learned is that he has a true heart for kids and a true dedication to the profession. So Rob, we look forward, we're going to miss you at Northwoods, but we're going to look forward to the work you do at Putnam Heights.
Appreciate your service. So now, the letter to parents on school safety, do I hear a motion to approve the
I, I'd leave, I don't know if anyone has revisions they want to make, but-
Well, I just wanted to put the motion on the floor.
Yeah, I'll move it, and then we can discuss.
Okay. Commissioner Lugenville's moved to accept the letter, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Torres. Are there any additions or corrections that, I found a couple of editorial things, but I think those have been fixed. Is there anything else?
I guess I, I had a question. I wasn't sure if, if we, we wouldn't want to address editorial now, or I should have probably sent them in advance like you did, and I didn't think to do that. So that's my error.
I think, I think she can-
We can do it now. We can edit it as we-
Yeah.
I also don't want to bog down, I don't want to bog things down, though. Edit. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we want to get it right. So go ahead, Commissioner Laura Bika.
Well, I, one question I had, I guess, that might change some of my questions about the letter, is I, it occurred to me that would the district consider featuring school safety on the website as a permanent area? And that we could then, because there, I was trying to read this from the perspective of somebody who, who might not know about things that are mentioned here. And so I asked about the website, because if this became more of a living document that would have links and be embedded in a larger, you know, kind of in a larger approach, especially resource, you know, resources for students, parents, teachers.
Would you care to make an amendment to the motion? An addition or amendment?
I don't think that's needed.
Okay.
It's just that if I knew that that was possible, I think it would, I wouldn't feel the need to put a lot more in here, because it would be part of a frame, a whole framework.
Okay. So what's your pleasure?
Could, could that be, I know that in the past- I know that in the past, we've, we've established new tabs, and we've kind of asked the Communications Committee to do that, like establish, like at the top of the site, like we have the referendum one now, which is permanent. So, or you think of something like up there, like a tab?
Yeah.
So could we, so that we could ask that maybe, ask the Communications Committee to work on that? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I'd imagine at first, as part of that banner, a feature on the banner, and then, I mean, you know, as you're sorry to say, I mean, you know, this is part of the, this is part of the culture we're in now, so it's not going anywhere.
Well, the letter is a one-time thing, and I think putting it on the web would be a good idea.
Mostly as a resource site for anyone, children, all the way through staff, and yeah.
I think that, I think that's good, because I think that, I mean, a lot of folks are on our webpage, it's a convenient place to go, and they might not want to always read the long emails that we send them in long letters, but that's a different place, they can go and get some bite-sized things. And also, it allows for, if administration, the superintendent's office, someone else wants to maybe add, add a post at some point or a resource, I think that's great.
Just as a clarification, are you looking for resources for parents and students and staff, or are you looking for our safety plan and-
I thought of it kind of as a repository for all of that.
So certainly, we can, can use the website for a repository for resources. I don't know how much of our safety plan we would want to make public-
Oh, sure, understood.
-on the, on the website, so as long as there's an understanding, because we're constantly updating that, and there's some of it that we want for staff. But yeah, I mean, we could certainly create a website for that.
I had a reporter call me last week and want to know what we were doing, and I said, well, first of all, I don't know everything we're doing, and secondly, if I knew, I wouldn't tell you, because it seems ridiculous to tell everybody what we're doing for safety. So, but I think that if everyone's okay, we can pass the motion to approve the letter to be sent out to families, and then-
So in the first paragraph, because we wrote this before, I think what happened at Memorial had a significant impact on a lot of people. It's not just unique to my family, but, so I didn't know if the first paragraph, we're talking about events occurring in schools as it's removed from Eau Claire, and it is no longer removed from us. So if we wanted to add to the first paragraph, including our own district.
After, in America, schools, comma, including our own district.
I missed what you said, I'm sorry.
Do you still want to use the word horrific?
It's, no, that wouldn't be appropriate, but something that acknowledge, that would acknowledge the impact. I didn't necessarily mean, I think it's okay to say horrific, they are horrific events in other schools, but what happened here, I, I wouldn't call that a horrific event, but we could call it, you know, just recognizing the local impact on people. but we could call it, you know, just recognizing the local impact on people. I don't know, Joe, you were, I mean, is that okay? From the way that you were thinking about it wording-wise?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think how to put what you're saying about adding, because I think that's important. Yep. Yes. That's incidents in Eau Claire?
Yeah, I, and I don't want people to be, I, I don't know if you want, you want to say Memorial High School specifically? I don't know. Okay. I, the reason I said that is because I didn't want people to think other things were going on and that we're just talking about Memorial, but...
Well, I think because we've had so many, we've had so many of these threats at middle schools.
Or just threats within the Eau Claire area school district.
Right.
Sure. The Eau Claire might be the as well as, so it would come second after...
The other, the other events in America schools.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. Carry on. Go ahead.
Yeah, right there, Pat. Are you typing, Patty?
Oh, I'm trying to...
Is that okay? Second paragraph, do you see where it says individual relationship, community and society? I actually didn't know what relationship was. I would probably just say individual, community, societal.
Community probably covers it.
Okay.
So we can take off.
And if at any point it's, if this is bogging down the process, just say so and like we can move on.
How many do you have?
Yeah, well, yeah, that, I mean, so say if it's too much. Yeah, is that okay?
Well, I'm just wondering, how many more you have?
Right.
A lot?
Uh, it depends, I guess.
Oh, okay. Well, it's, it's kind of hard to do it.
Right.
Right here.
Um, could I just do things that are not edits then, that are just sort of, or no?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, okay, I, uh, yeah, I can, that's all right. I can let it go.
You sure you don't have other?
Yeah, I can let it go. That's fine.
I see quite a bit on your page.
Uh, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Whatever you have on your page, you should send it to Patty and Mary Ann so they can see what can be incorporated on that webpage, if it's more information.
Sure.
Can I hear from the other board members? Are you all right with letting them do the, Dr. Hardbeck and Patty will look at the other suggestions she has. Charles, you had something too, didn't you?
I just want to maybe bring this for thinking. In light of what Dr. Hardbeck just got done saying earlier about the expectations of cooperation that we need from parents and students, and she also laid out the potential consequence for such behavior, I, it hits me hard that there may not be enough people hearing what was said tonight. So if a letter is to go out to every family members, then it ought to be spelled out the same so that more people would hear about the same message. I'm just thinking out loud. A lot more like we have in, in the last bullet in the letter, when we have a crisis communication plan, maybe we can have a, another section that explain about the expectation or consequence for such behavior. And if nothing else that we want to do in the letter, maybe the website can spell out what she said earlier.
If I may make a suggestion, I think we're just not quite ready to vote on this and we, we can do the rest of the suggestions and the edits this week and we have another meeting next Monday night. And maybe it would be best if, if we just turn in our edits and let Dr. Hardbeck take a look at them and Joe, you wrote the original letters, so maybe you'd like to look at them. And then we can a wholeheartedly vote next Monday. How would that be?
Yeah. Um, I don't, I think I misunderstood the, I think I don't always know what the process is. And I think I misunderstood the process. That's why I think, I feel, I don't want to hold things up. I would feel very settled with the idea that it's going to be part of a whole framework. And so please don't misunderstand that. It's like, you know, that I have, you know...
So you could vote tonight?
That, yeah.
Okay.
There might be some good things.
Um, there could be, but it could also be...
And then we could just bring it back. It's only a week.
Um, my only feeling, I do feel a bit of a sense of urgency and I wouldn't have said that had it, had what happened at Memorial had not happened, but it feels rather urgent to me. Yeah.
Charles, what do you feel? Do you want to do? Do you want more incorporation of what Dr. Hardbeck's statement said too?
Well, I want to hear the rest of the commissioner's point of view too, because I believe that the message that Dr. Hardbeck said tonight are strong, that need to be heard. And the letter, it's a medium of communication to families.
Well, I feel the same way. I agree with you. Anyone else?
Yeah, it is, I agree too. It's a unique opportunity to communicate with families and that's an important message, I think, too. I do agree, though, with the, kind of the timeliness of this, of this letter. I just don't know that we can kind of get both of those things, get the fullness of the message and address the timeliness. I'm, I'm not sure how to resolve it. Yes. I guess my feeling is there's not going to be a single letter that we'll be able to write that can convey everything that we want to put in there. I mean, that, you could never stop writing a letter about these issues. I do feel that a message has to go out this week. It's the first week back from break. Today, a horrific thing could have happened if it hadn't been for one kid. So this is on everyone's mind. So my feeling is that we should send out a letter tomorrow. And I think that what Commissioner Vika has brought to the table of having a, having a standing presence on the district communication platforms about this issue is, is one way to incorporate everything that we can, that comes across, you know, resources, links. Maybe it's a statement from the superintendent, you know, maybe it's an update on, on a, on a given plan or something the safety team is doing or students are doing. So I think that it's a, it's a both and. So I think that I would suggest that moving forward with the letter and, but also moving forward with a website and a platform where we can continue to add new things.
Other speaking? Yes, Mr. Torres.
We drafted this letter two weeks ago, or three weeks ago. Yeah, three weeks ago. And I think it just should be delivered. I think that Dr. Vika's suggestion to open up a tab in the website is very good and we should, you know, move forward with that. And my understanding is that Dr. Hardbeck and the principals are going to discuss ways in which they will address the families of each school in ways that are concrete, direct and educative. So that will just give more information to the public in, in more precise ways, but I think we, we need to move forward.
Okay. Call the question? That's what, okay. All those in favor? All those in favor, favor of sending the letter out tomorrow as planned, say yes. Yes. All those in favor, not in favor of that, say no. The motion passes. It's a problem trying to write a letter as a group. It really is. Okay. Now we are going to go to adjourned to committee reports and I think Mr. Schmidt is our first presenter. And you're going to be talking about bi-annual communication plan status report.
Yes. Good evening. This is a, I come to you every roughly six months to give you an update on the communications committee. It's interesting, I heard you just mention it earlier, so it's a good chance for us to visit with what the committee's been up to and where they're going next. So we will walk you through a few of the, a few of the things that have been going on. Again, this is related to our fifth strategic priority, partnerships with families and community. The pictures in this particular presentation have actually aligned with part of the communication strategy right now and that's part of our piece with the ECSD inspires hashtag for our social media campaign. And so hopefully you've been seeing either through the superintendent tweets with that hashtag and also we've been trying to sprinkle in every time we can get the ECSD inspires message out there from, with our students and families. So you'll see those pictures throughout tonight's presentation. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Again, this is aligned with that fifth priority area. And so the purpose of the committee, we like to, we like to remind each time we do this presentation, and there's a lot of redundancy in this presentation because we, we try to, a lot of this is the same, to develop those district-wide communication plan. It's not a PR office. The communications committee is more of a, of a long-term strategy. A lot of our short-term communications are still done through Patty Iverson and Terry Piper Thompson. So this is a little bit more of that not today type thing, which Patty and Terry already do very nicely for us. It's also to establish clear, consistent communications. This is a difficult in any organization because everyone has in their mind what those communications look like. And also finally, to develop those workflows for internal and external communications. And we'll get into that in a moment as well. The committee members come from many different walks throughout district and then, of course, Terry on the bottom also serves as a role out at DeLong. We're going to talk about how this group is going to be changing as well to in the next few months. The role, this committee is not a decision-making committee. They bring, they bring a lot of information to the, either the executive team or sometimes to policy and governance. I remember we brought a big chunk and we're hoping to do that again soon in the next few months. We have a few more policy and governance items to bring. And then they, there's a lot of, a lot of looping of feedback. So there's, this group is, we understand that communications, again, have a lot of different perspectives and it takes a bit of time to kind of move their work forward. So I want to update you on what's happened since I presented back in August. So we have a revision of our communication plan and actually, I'm going to pass that around as a draft. You're the first. Thank you. This should be easier, right? Excellent. So passing around right now is our revised communication plan. And actually, the old communication plan, we had a lot of details to it. It was much more like a checklist of things we were trying to accomplish. This is, we're, we're slowly moving the communication plan up to be almost like a committee version of a strategic plan, looking more at two major goal areas. And so as that's making its way around to you, we'll, again, there's a big draft splash and I think it'll permanently always have a draft on there because we're continuing to revise this. So this looks quite a bit different in terms of the style that the last one came to you, but again, it's got two major goals and as you can see, to develop, and actually, I should do this on the fly. Can I make a switch, Patty, over to the, this? Can I do that? Thank you. There we go. So we're making a shift toward, again, a little bit broader look at developing that, the brand of the district. And so there's a lot about bringing, as soon as you're talking about doing things on the website, you got my attention because that is part of our brand and how that looks. And believe it or not, the, we're making some changes to the website soon, we'll be talking about, and the placement of everything on there is very purposeful to try to convey a certain message where you would expect things. Anytime a change takes place, we all get a little nervous because that's not where people expected things to be. So you can see some things in there in the communication plan about on goal one, I mean, then you can see those, the major strategy areas, those four big areas, and then engagement area two, to engage stakeholders in the brand. So the development of the brand and then engaging in the brand. And you can see the different stakeholders we're trying to engage with. Those are the broader perspectives of a communication plan, rather than getting mired in the details. So it's trying to take that and get away for, and to, to use that more as the charter for the work going forward. All right, Patty, how do you get me back? There we go. Thank you. The next thing is, part of the branding is we've actually put on RFP for a brand manual process. We have, we have a, we approved that RFP and now that work is moving forward, bringing together a small group of representative stakeholders, alumni, principals, teachers, family members from the community. It's a small group, but they represent a lot of different facets, to try to get that brand work going because again, it's, it's really like a marketing campaign to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what the brand looks like and then how do we actually put a document together to inform our staff how to leverage our brand for the district? So that's the work that's moving forward. The next piece is the mission, vision and slogan. So we have it on three signs in the, in the boardroom here. We created one with that new district blue color. Again, we shifted to a little bit more vibrant of a blue and we have all three of those on the same, on the same sign and that is going to be installed over the next few months in each of the entryways of our schools as families enter. So we had that item created and, and produced and now it's, the installation is our next step. And then also our office signs. One of the things we looked at is we wanted a way for our office signs to, if you go into, and Kate, we picked on your department, we, so here's an example of human resources. We want to have, when you walk in buildings and offices, and we're starting in this building and then we hope to move this to offices in the other parts of the district, when you walk in, you can actually see before you enter who is, who, who is in those offices, who resides in those offices and what they look like and what their role is so that you don't have to walk in kind of wondering. So that's been part of the work moving forward and so we have the template put in place and the next step is to install these in this building and then we'll continue, and then we'll move that out to other parts of the district as well. Also, part of our work has been developing that consistent branding. So we finished our second video production, academic career planning. And if you were here for parent advisory, we, we shared the first version of that. There's actually a small little tweak that we're putting in that and we can share the link out to that video. It's about four minutes. The initiative we talked about, the ECSD inspires, trying to create that hashtag and communication strategy through our social media campaign. We are continuing to have our annual campus course for principals, building secretaries and partnership coordinators. So we deliver some of the, the way we're trying to, to develop and implement our communication strategy through a campus course and then we follow that up, and we will talk about this in a few moments, with site level visits to work on how that implementation is going in each particular building. Finally, we update our logos. So the, this logo that you see here, the one on the left, is, we actually never had it electronically in a clean, unviral format. We finally do. So this is good news. So people were making copies of it, whatever, so we finally got it digitized, cleaned up through our graphic designer, so we're excited. That's called the stack logo. We also developed another stack logo and the difference between these two is the second one would be used in very small spaces. So if you were to put this one in a really, really teeny spot, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't, you would not want this logo in a teeny spot because you wouldn't be able to read all these letters. Neither of these, this logo down here that's, that's watermarked is, is still our logo, but these two provide you an option for when we are using spaces that require a more square type of an opening. And then finally, we updated the logo for Flynn. And again, their logo was not clean without any sort of problems like our first logo that I discussed. And we are cleaning up the logos right now. And we are cleaning up the logos right now, revising the ones for Prairie Ridge. There's a whole story about owls and ears, that, once we get that resolved, that one will be ready to be shared. And that's, they're trying to decide what the ears look like on their owl. And then, the Northwoods, as we were talking about with Rob earlier, Northwoods is updating their, theirs as well, and Longfellow's updating their lion. So, we're actually cleaning up a lot of these logos, because our logos have been all over the place. No one could find them. We're getting all the, Patty's nodding very nicely. We're finally getting these all cleaned up in one centralized location, and this is the agreed-upon logo. Please do not go use random logos that kind of look like your logo. Please use the logo. So, really, and again, this is all part of that brand strategy, because when you go to our website, you'll notice that there's some work, that there's, if you go to different school sites, you'll notice that there's a district logo, there's a, there is a logo for the, that school, and they are, they're supposed to be those logos, and we want to continue to make sure that they are reproducible and recognizable. If you think about all the different scamming that goes on in the world, one thing you want to be able to do is trust the messages that you're getting from schools. And you really want to make sure that, so when I see the logo come in from Flynn or any other school, we want to make sure that it's consistent, reliable, that we know that this is Flynn talking to us. And that's a lot of the work that we're trying to do, is get that consistency, so that people can trust it. So, we've been developing some new processes. We actually have an intern working with us for the first year. We're supporting, and it's actually funded through, through the, actually, when you have an intern, and the intern earns a state certificate, who actually turns around and supports the funding, so it's been really kind of an exciting process to support our youth apprenticeship program, at the same time, develop some marketing skills for one of our interns, and she's done a lot of, she's from Memorial, has done a lot of great work for us, including our, we, one of the strategies we're looking at is the development of a district app, and she's done a lot of the research on our district app for us. And then, the other piece has been our advertising for enrollment and summer school, and really using social media advertising. And so, this is our advertisement for our enrollment, to encourage families to enroll at the district. Love that picture. And this is the one for our summer school that went out on, this is actually a screenshot of the one that went out on social media. So, really looking at using different advertising strategies to try to reach our audiences. I put continuing some new processes, because they're relatively new, but they haven't been fully ingrained in the district, and that is that this committee now meets on a regular schedule every other week, or actually, they meet on the Mondays when the board meeting does not meet, when the board does not meet. Part of that is that Patty's a big member, part of that committee, we want to make sure that she can be there, so we've alternated that, and that seems to have worked actually quite well for us this year. We are continuing, this is our second year doing site-level meetings, and actually getting from our buildings the perspective of how these strategies are working. We hear all sorts of things from glowing praise to very pointed constructive criticisms. So, really trying to make sure that we are listening to our partners in our schools to try to leverage our strategy to the best that we can. When you onboard in our district as a new employee, you now go through a short little course on our, on our branding for the district. So, that is something that we just developed and incorporate into our HR process. Our public events, and by the way, if you are looking for something to do on April 15th, between 11:00 and 4:00, we have our next, I think this one is Kids Expo, is going to be out at the Sports Center. Let me know, or Emily Cooper in our office. We have, we're pretty much, if there isn't an event going on where you can rent a table, we're there now, and at least, and we are sharing whatever is timely for the district, so that our presence is there. We'll be talking about summer school, obviously, because the summer's coming up, and any other, any other items that different offices in the, in the district want to share. We, there's one other thing with that. Nope. So, we'll just, anyway, so we take volunteers for anyone who wants to be part of that. So, let me know if you're actually interested in joining that. Again, April 15th. It's actually a Sunday, I believe, from 11:00 to 4:00. The website review, this is a piece we were talking about a little bit earlier. We actually are going through our websites quite often to make sure not only does that look the same, but the way that different buildings implement it, because families that have children in multiple buildings expect to see certain things in certain places, and sometimes we get off track. And so, we continue to review our websites to make sure that we have some consistency for our users. And then, also reviewing the policies and rules associated with policy and governance. So, the student and staff acceptable to use the technology was one that we had recently done. The use of visual media in schools was one that we had worked with policy and governance, and we're looking towards now, towards news and media and social, social media as part of the next round of the ones we're going to be bringing to policy and governance, and also student privacy and, and student records. So, we are also implementing some new tools. We updated the district, we had the district update was revised, we're continuing to tweak that. Giving you an example, that is actually how we actually invited all staff to be part of the April 15th date as well. So, that is, that tool has been actually really wonderful, because what, used to, the old model, Patty would send out a static PDF, and then if something got forgotten, we'd have to wait a whole week for it to be put out. Now, we can get it in there, and Patty can make, it's updated live, which is really a nice feature. Has a lot of searching features that never existed before, and so, it's really been a much more powerful tool than we had in the past. Our SharePoint Intranet development continues. And our boundary webpage, and actually, in the webpage development, I want to just show you some of the work that went through the committee. They did a real nice job, and of course, you passed a boundary, which meant that we had some work to do, which was update the high school boundary to reflect the work of the board. And then, for the elementary, we know that we also have this little development up here on the northeast side, the High Clear development. And so, at the elementary, of course, this is, says Locust Lane, this one says Northwoods, and this one says areas being reviewed by demographic and trends. So, we've been working on things like this to make sure that we're sharing a consistent message with what the board has been doing. So, that has been part of our activity as well. And then, finally, the ADA website work. There's a, there's a strong push across the country to make sure websites are compliant with ADA. James Martin and his team has, this has been tireless work. I mean, they have really ensured and protected the district from liability by making sure that these sites are compliant, and I have to tell you, this was no small task. So, if you see James later, just, you know, thank him for that, because it's been some outstanding work from his team. Some next steps coming up. Again, we want to complete that brand manual to communicate in writing what we're, what we want our message to look like. We have one more video that we're going to be developing, which is going to be about summer school, and then the couple logos, or the three logos that we'll share with you next time we meet. And then, we have to transition. So, part of the realignment with the executive team is going to be shifting the leadership of this to the new executive director of administration. So, that'll be a shift for the committee in the next few months. And then, some of the pieces we'll continue to do is that site-level support, and some more of those communication tools, looking again at policies and that reinforcing of the brand. Questions that you might have?
We really appreciate all the work you and your committee have done. Thanks, James. I see you in the back.
They are, it was, I will just say that we meet every other week, but in between, the people on that list do a lot of work. They're just very passionate about doing this and doing it well, so, really, they're a really great group to work with.
Any comments or anything? Thank you, thank you. And you're up next on the next one?
Actually, I'm going to pass the baton to Michelle Rackey. So, Michelle is going to discuss with you a shift in what we're looking to do for grading at the elementary school in particular, at grades four and five. At grade, she's going to talk to you a little about the history, about the adoption of standards-based grading in the district, and a, and a piece that's been hanging out there for, believe it or not, about 19 years that we're finally looking to clean up. So, I'll pass that off to Michelle.
Hi, Michelle. Thank you for, for coming in.
Escape, okay. I made the escape again. Okay, I have an old one up here. So, I am here with Melissa Greer, who is a teacher at Putnam Heights, and Colleen Minor, who is the principal at Lake Shore Elementary, and both of them have been very instrumental in this process of working through and looking at our standards-based grading that is happening at the fourth and fifth grade levels. And so, we ask ourselves, why are we picking out fourth and fifth grade? If we look at the way grading happens at the elementary levels, in K, grades K through three, students receive just standards-based grading. When they get to fourth and fifth grade, teachers, they give both standards-based grading and letter grades. And so, we're going to look at the history of this, just like Jim had said, and we're going to look at some data that we have collected, and then look at some recommendations that our group has, has, has created. Okay? And what's interesting about Melissa is she loops kids with her in, at Putnam, and so she teaches both fourth and fifth grade, and so she sees both of them. So, this standards-based grading and the letter grades at fourth and fifth grade, they align to four areas in our strategic plan, academic achievement, student social and emotional growth, high-quality staff, and partnerships with families and community. So, if we look at the history of standards-based grading, just as Jim had alluded to, that this, we started giving standards-based grades 19 years ago, in 1999. And so, that's when we started, where K three, they received standards-based grading, grades, and then in fourth and fifth grade, teachers were assigning both the letter grade and the standards-based grade. And so, the district, as we have gone through and we have looked at this, we are still committed to standards-based grades. We have done a lot of research on this. We have looked at what other districts are doing. But throughout those 19 years, teachers, families, they have expressed concern with assigning both that letter grade and that standards grade. And so, that's what got us to this point where we started to take a little closer look at it. So, if we look at the philosophy of standards-based grades, as standards-based grading systems, when you look at them, they're based on learning outcomes. So, we have learning outcomes, we have performance standards, and students receive a grade for each learning outcome or each performance standard. Standards are criterion or proficiency-based, and so, students are communicated what those criteria are that teachers are looking for ahead of time, so that they know what is expected of them. It separates the achievement from the effort, so you know what is, how a student is achieving on certain outcomes or performance standards, and it gives that effort a different score and a different area. So, you really can separate the achievement from the effort. Selected assessments are used for grading purposes. The teacher decides whether or not, what do they want to show for evidence that a student is meeting that outcome? And so, it could be a test, it could be a quiz, it could be an observation. The teacher decides what, what is that evidence that they are going to use? And then, it emphasizes the most recent evidence of learning when grading. So, how is a student doing now? And we record that at that point in time. 19 years ago, when we adopted standards-based grade, we had to make some decisions with the Eau Claire Area School District. And we have a handbook on grading at the elementary level, and with that, 19 years ago, we decided that grades should reflect a student's progress toward the end-of-year expectation. So, what should a student know by the end of fourth grade? What should a student know in each of these learning areas by the end of fifth grade? And then, we, we, we show how they're progressing through the year. We decided that grades should be based on achievement or demonstration of skills, that it should be individual achievement, it should not be group achievement. And we also decided that the effort, the participation, the attitude, and the other behaviors, that we created this behaviors of lifelong learners. So, we created a separate category, which students would be graded with, not on the achievement, but on those efforts of participation. So, our behaviors of lifelong learners, these are the categories that we identified 19 years ago, collaborative worker, community contributor, quality producer, and complex thinker. And we are busy in my department, in the assessment department, of developing a data set around behaviors of lifelong learners, and how we are performing in these areas at the elementary level. So, that's something that you will get in the near future, that data set. So, I'm going to pass it over to Colleen, and have you, have her talk through the process that we went through to create a recommendation for next steps.
Good evening, everyone. One of the things that we did was, we first started out as an elementary group of administrators, as well as some central office administrators, and we were asking, what is the best practice regarding standards-based grading and letter grading? So, it was a small group of us, it was Dave Oldenburg and Michelle, Adam Keaton, who's at Flynn, Sarah Lynch, who's at Longfellow, myself, Kurt Madsen, who's at Meadowview, as well as Laura Schlichting from Locust Lane. So, we all met, so as a kind of a small work group, and we started looking at best practice and research about standards-based grading and letter-based grading. So, that was our first part, kind of answering, you know, what's out there and where do we need to move next? So, then, what we did based on our research is, we kind of came up with a game plan of what to do, and so then, we came to the, all of the elementary administrators and shared what we had learned for our best, of our research on best practices, and then from there, we decided, yes, let's move forward with this. So, now, at this point in time, we brought the teachers involved, because who is this going to most directly impact? It's going to most directly impact the teachers and our families. So, we brought them together, and as a part of that plan, we created a survey, so we could get feedback from the teachers in terms of what was going well, what needed to happen, so that way, in looking at best practice, that we could make the most smooth transition as possible, and is this something that we should be doing, shouldn't be doing, and just moving forward? So, we created a survey, we gave it out to all of our fourth and fifth grade teachers, and we had a fairly nice sample size from which to come from, to actually make some good informed decisions. So, from there, Melissa Greer, as well as some other teachers, and Laura Schlichting was a part of that group, and so, we met down here at the board office, and we, again, looked at our research, looked at the data that we received from all of the teachers that filled it out, and said, what are we going to do? And so, then, from that, we had a couple of different approaches that we were going to take. Some of it could be gradual, you know, maybe perhaps we do just fourth grade, next year just, and then fifth grade, still get the letter grades and to do that, or do kind of a rip-the-band-aid approach off what's best practice. So, we, we had a lot of discussions about what we're going to be doing. So, we collected that feedback, and then based with our group, we came up with a recommendation of actually just beginning in the fall to move to, obviously, of course, with your understanding and blessing and everything, to move forward to having be just standards-based grading moving forward. But we'll go through in the data and share all that, but just so you know, this has been a collaborative process, as we've gone through, constantly looping back and getting feedback, so that it wasn't just top-down remotely figuring out what this is. We did get feedback going through. So, now, we're going to continue passing it on, so you actually can see what some of the data was from the teachers that shared what got us to that point.
So, here are the results of the survey that we sent to all of the teachers that give out grades at the fourth and fifth grade level. So, we did send out 121 surveys, and we received back, you can see, 63 people responded back. And so, we asked nine Likert-scaled questions, strongly agree to strongly disagree, most of them being philosophical questions about standards-based grading and grading in general. And really, the reason behind that was, we needed to understand, if we did make this switch, what kind of PD do we need to offer our teachers to make a successful transfer over that, and make the most successful environment for our students in the classroom? And so, if you look at the, I'm going to emphasize the top question and the bottom, or the top statement and the bottom statement. The top statement is, standards-based grades give a more accurate picture of what students know and can do than traditional letter grades. Really, we needed to know, what is your philosophy behind this? Do you agree? Do you not agree? But if you look at that, 82% of the teachers agree with that statement. So, that gave us the understanding, okay, most of them do agree with the standards-based grading, but there still is 18% that do not agree with that. So, we need to pay attention to them also, so that's where we had open-ended questions to ask, what do we need to know as we work through this process? And through some of that open-ended questions, we found out that, that teachers, that they had, where do I grade behavior? Where do I grade hard work? And so, that made us really understand that we need to come back to that behaviors of lifelong learners, and we need to have some PD on that, because maybe, you know, as teacher turnover has happened in 19 years, we haven't come back to that. So, what does that PD look like, so that we can really focus in on that PD for behaviors of lifelong learners? And we'll talk about some of that work we're going to do this summer. And then, the last one is that last statement, I support having only standards-based grades and removing letter grades. 73% of our respondents agreed with the statement that they would like just to have those standards-based grades. And so, again, there is that 27% that don't agree with that. So, one of the things that, again, we looked at all of the So one of the things that, again, we looked at all of the respondents, you know, that was open-ended, of how do we help them and what PD do we need to offer them? But for the most part, in those open-ended questions, a lot of the staff, when they responded, they found inconsistencies with having to give a standards-based grade and a letter grade, and it was causing confusion amongst students and families. And so that was, that was heard through the open-ended responses. But most of the teachers in the open-ended responses were for removing of that, those letter grades. Okay? So through all of the people that we have gotten feedback from, and the one group that we're going to yet get feedback from is going to be PAC, the Parent Advisory Council, on Tuesday night, so we'll be taking it there also. Okay. So our recommendation through all of the groups and getting feedback is to have standards-based grades at the fourth and fifth grade levels and remove letter grades starting in the two thousand and nineteen school year. We want to make it consistent with K three, we want to reduce the workload of teachers, because it is a lot more work for a teacher to have to give a standards-based grade and a letter grade, and we want to focus on the PDs to, to support our standards-based system. So that's our recommendation, and then I'm going to pass it over to Melissa, and she's going to go through our timeline of implementation.
The group that met had a really productive discussion about how this should happen, when this should happen, once we reached our recommendation, and we really felt like implementing this next school year is not too soon, that we really believe that this is the best way to communicate progress to families, and so the sooner we can do it, the better. It would begin with some work this April. As soon as we get approval, we would want to make sure that all teachers kindergarten through sixth grade are aware this is happening. We think it's important at the elementary level for all teachers to be aware, and obviously, sixth-grade teachers would be impacted if they are going to be the ones that are first assigning letter grades. We would want them to know that. There is, as Michelle mentioned, a handbook on reporting to families of elementary children. We started going through and looking at what an updated version of that might look like, but then again, want to wait until we get approval, but that would be ready to get rolling here this spring. Lots of work would need to happen this summer, and that would partly be the professional development piece that Michelle mentioned, to teachers on standards-based grading, and especially that separation of the behaviors of lifelong learners. Our understanding is that teachers are comfortable with standard-based grades, we're already assigning them. I think it was just clear in the comments that some of those behavior pieces are creeping into the letter grades, when really, we have a separate section on the report card to communicate that to families.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a question?
Oh, absolutely.
What is a standards-based grade look like? Is it a percentage or...
It's a number. So on the report card, so for example, in fourth grade, one of the things I report on is, "Student reads and understands grade-level text with accuracy and fluency." So a one is that student's beginning to meet the end-of-year standard, a two is the student is making progress towards the end-of-year standard, a three is the student is proficient at the end-of-year standard, and a four is the student is exceeding the end-of-year benchmark. Yep, you're welcome. Another thing we would need to do this summer is to create rubrics and checklists to help teachers with those behaviors of lifelong learner's scores. We really believe in the importance of that section on the report card, and if letter grades are removed, we want to make sure that teachers have tools that they can use to help them with that portion of the report card. And another piece that we talked about being so extremely important is the communication to families, and that we would want that to happen multiple times. We talked about this year in June, when report cards are mailed out, that it would make sense to include a notification in current third and fourth graders' report cards, letting them know that next year, as fourth and fifth graders, they would not be assigned letter grades. We talked about a reminder in September at Welcome Back Day for families, and then again, at October conferences would give us a perfect time to just remind families, especially those fifth-grade families who received letter grades this year as fourth-grade students. We would want to make sure that they're very clear in why this is happening, and it's really to help them have a better understanding of their child's progress. And then lastly, during the next school year, eighteen, nineteen, we know that we have some work to do with science and social studies, in particular, on what a one, two, three, and four looks like in those two subject areas, and we know that that's something that we can tackle next school year.
I have a question.
Questions?
Is that our next slide?
Okay.
I have a question. Have you asked students what they think about it? Have you verified if they are able to understand the different levels of performance for each criterion?
Yeah, it's a good question. I have not talked to my class about it, because I didn't want to approach the topic prematurely. However, what I see in students is, especially at the fourth-grade level, when they start working for letter grades, some of them, that becomes their sole focus, and that's very concerning to me, because I don't believe at age nine and ten, you should be categorizing yourself as an A student, B student, or C student. What I do see in areas, like when our, when my professional learning community team, my fourth-grade team meets, and we develop an assessment that is based on a standard, for example, we recently developed one on analyzing the theme of a text, and students were graded on a scale of one through four. When they're taught what those numbers mean, that's the power, because they're able to realize, oh, I'm at a two, but I need to be at a three. And so I think just as important as to communicate with parents, it's also incredibly powerful to communicate what those numbers mean to students as well.
And how do they own the process? Do, do they regularly check their progress? Is time, is time embedded during the class time to do that?
Yep.
Self-analysis?
And that would vary by classroom, obviously, but I think that students, when, feedback is an extremely powerful tool. And so teacher feedback, we know, is an instructional strategy that improves student performance. And so when we're able to give accurate and timely feedback, and students are able to reflect on that through our formative assessments, then that's how we hope, that when it comes time for a summative assessment, students can use that feedback to then meet the bar we need them to meet.
A logistical question, or maybe two. Is the current Skyward system functional to this model? And finally, how do you plan to manage the transcripts at the end of the year?
So I can speak to the Skyward question. Right now, at the elementary level, our fourth and fifth-grade math grade books are set up to manage both letter grades and standards grades. So Skyward can definitely handle a standards-based grade book, it already does so, it's just doing both jobs. Do you want to then talk, Michelle, about to the second question?
Yeah. I just want to, one of the things that we do have set up in place is that, we have it set up to the point where our, when we enter grades into the Skyward grade book, they flow into our data warehouse, and teachers, the professional learning community teams, they can analyze that data on a grade level, they can analyze that data on a school level based on the standards, based on the learning outcomes. So that's huge. Skyward is, it actually has been made more difficult. Nineteen years ago, when we implemented the standards-based grading with the letter grades, it was a very difficult process for Skyward, because they had never done that before, the way that we want to implement it, and we were the ones that kind of blazed that road for them. And so to remove that, Skyward is, it would be an easier process for us, it doesn't get as muddy for us. Does that answer the question?
Well, it was, I was curious about, about a practical...
Yeah, so I think when you're talking about a transcript at an elementary grade level, that's, that's your report card. And so that's an easy, we've done that with K three, we would replicate that same process going four or five.
If one of our students were to move to a different state where they don't do standard-based assessment, how would that connect?
They get, they would get their report card with the standards on it, so they know exactly what are the learning outcomes that student was trying to achieve at that grade level. So communicates the subject area and those learning targets. So that's the information that they would have, which would be more information than they would have if they would just say, "A math, I got an A in," if that makes sense.
Thank you.
And the key on the report card says those exact words that I mentioned, beginning to meet the end-of-year standard, progressing toward the end-of-year standard, meeting or exceeding. And so if you were a receiving teacher in another state, you'd be able to see the learning target and whether the student was beginning, progressing, meeting, or exceeding. So again, probably giving more information than he earned to be.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to thank you very much for working on this. I found out that we were having our fourth and fifth teachers doing both last year during an elementary school visit, and I was really surprised to hear that. So I'm really happy that you're doing this, I'm excited that you're making this move. To me, what you're ultimately doing, and what, if we, if we make this change, I think what we're doing is we're creating more opportunities for our fourth and fifth-grade students to persevere as learners in the face of any challenges they face. And I think that for us as a board, to do this would be really powerful, and I think it would be affirmation, continuing affirmation, that we want all of our elementary students to love the process and act of learning, rather than just earning a grade. So I will really strongly and excitedly support your recommendation.
Commissioner Hardner.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Luganbill's enthusiasm. I'm also enthusiastic about this, this change, and I think it's a great step, particularly ideas about separating behavioral from academic, and I think there's a lot of good stuff in here. I have some, I'm interested in this topic, and I'm, just a couple of questions about the learning targets. Are they, would, do, would you consider them to be more granular? I've seen implementations of this where it's quite granular, you have things like, oh, I can multiply single-digit, I can multiply double-digit, versus versions that are more geared towards standardized tests, or what, how, where on the spectrum would you say this falls?
I think we're in between, honestly. I look at some of the statements, like one of the statements on my fourth-grade report card is, "Adds and subtracts multi-digit numbers." I mean, that's, you know, very specific. But then there's another one that is more like math practices-based, you know, attends to precision or uses repeated reasoning, that is a much grander topic. And so I do think it's a mixture. I know that, I believe that through the process that the district ELA committee is going through, they recently made some changes to some report card statements in the area of writing, and that was really helpful, because it definitely feels as though the things that I'm teaching and assessing are really right there on the report card. I know that that's yet to be taken under with reading, but I know that that's also coming as that ELA committee moves to reading within the next couple of years. And so it feels as though the right work is happening with those statements. They're not perfect, but I also know that there's teams that are looking at them when the different curriculums go under review. And so it feels as though the revisions that are being made are the right revisions.
That's great. And I, I think, and maybe this speaks a little bit to Commissioner Torres's comment, too, about student ownership. I think, my sense of it is that the more granular targets facilitate student ownership better. There's bite-sized chunks that a student can understand, has a better potential to understand and, and take ownership of and work towards. I'm really excited about that aspect of this, and so I wonder, along with this change, are there other changes that we would see in the district to try and capitalize on these improved opportunities for student ownership of their learning?
So I, we, the work that we are doing with literacy, I mean, that is, it's going right into that, this, where we're really looking at those learning outcomes, and just the work that we have to do, we have identified that science and social studies, we need to start heading down that road, so that we can just keep refining, you know, the work that we are doing and making it better and better for all students to be able to achieve in our classrooms. So, and taking ownership, I think is very important. So, it's big work.
I think it's very exciting work. As a college teacher, I frequently got, what do I have to do to get an A? I, you know...
Fourth-grade teachers get that, too.
Yeah. And I was a voice teacher and taught various classes, too, but it, it was, well, you're in progress, you know, and there is not a point at which it's, it's a sliding scale, really. Yeah. Thank you very much for your work.
Dr. Hardner.
So as we've talked in our quarterly conversations, the board has indicated that they wanted to see a definition of criterias and indicators that would assess not only social-emotional development, but an alignment with the ECASD core values, and also how those relate to the cognitive abilities. And we feel that this work is a, is a beginning step to that, that requirement that you had asked for, and I think it will provide us with a basis to begin to analyze the impact of a program, a school, a teacher, in terms of, of how we're using our resources. So we're not there yet, but through the work of this committee and through the work of the literacy committee, we're starting to get there.
Yeah, I, that's, Graham, to me, that's a huge point of this, and one of the reasons I'm excited about it is, to see the, the behavioral piece broken out gives that opportunity for those assessments to be developed. I wonder, as I look at the list that's on there, you, I think, Michelle, maybe, I think it was you who mentioned that was a rather old list, and it's still a valid list, I think, but we also have the dimensions of learning, which I know you're very familiar with. How is that, how is that bringing into this, being brought into this?
We haven't rated them yet, but there are going to be conversations around this list, you know? So when we come around this this summer, and we start looking at those rubrics and those checklists, determining, do we need to make adjustments to this list to either make it more comprehensive or less comprehensive? Are we missing something? So we'll really take note of that as we work through this and make those resources available for our teachers.
But I will say this, if you look at the behaviors of the lifelong learners and the dimensions of learning and the alignment that Michelle and her group did with the strategic plan, it's beginning to take shape. This is not work that can be done overnight.
No.
Right?
Correct.
And it, it requires a good deal of collaboration, and you can see that collaboration, principal teacher, central office staff, and they represent just a portion of the committee that's working on this. But this is exciting work, and it is what you had asked for.
I'll just say one last thing, it is exciting, I'm excited, and I'm thrilled to see it happening, and I wonder, have we talked about middle and high school?
As I said, this does not happen overnight. But I'm, I'm really inspired by your enthusiasm.
Are there any comments from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, Charles, go ahead.
First of all, I do want to say, appreciate the work a lot, but I just want to express my own experience, and that might be generalized with families out there. I do have three children, and they've been through the same system, and from time to time, I question if it's me or the system. I, I do see that there's some inconsistency of interpreting the different category, one or two or three, with the different teachers. So my main question is, what kind of measurement the district has so that the way to apply the criteria are consistent for the whole district?
I'm glad you brought that up, and that's one of the things that we, we see, we had seen through the survey results, is that we think it will be very important with that professional development to come... is that we think it will be very important with that professional development to come back once a year to kind of what we call norm it. What does a one mean for a student in math or literacy? What does a two mean? What does a three mean? Because we do have turnover of staff. And you think about in the 19 years, the turnover of staff that we have had. And because we don't do that every year, we do see inconsistencies. And so we need to really work with our group of principals and teachers and coordinators to look at and create that professional development so that we can start having those consistencies. So we know what that one means, what that two means. And it means the same thing if I was a student at Putnam Heights or if I was a student at Lake Shore.
And I think one of the things also to be thinking about is it comes back to our professional learning community. Cause Dr. Torres, uh, sorry, Dr. Boo, the questions you're asking, those would be what we'd be discussing within our grade level teams. And we'd be norming and collaboratively scoring. So that way it's consistent across. So you've got that interrated reliability, but that's only going to come through collaboration. And so this is just going to strengthen that collaboration that we have with our teachers. So that way whatever grade a person is getting is consistent and it's not going to matter from who their classroom teacher is or what school that they have, because we're following a rubric and we're all following it the way it's been designed. And we're having those conversations so that a one is truly a one across the district, a two, and it's not dependent on what teacher you have.
I'm going to give you a little story of an experience that we just had with our, our data warehouse and how powerful this has become in math, in the area of math. And I would, I would say that this is probably our strongest area with the standards based in our rubrics. We have, we have students that move school to school in the middle of the year. And we had a, a little kid that he, he moved from one of our schools to Lake Shore Elementary. And we were doing a data warehouse training on that day. And the teacher said, oh, this child won't show up in here because they just moved into here. That child showed up into her grade book, into the data warehouse. And she was able to see how the student scored in all of these standards area. And she goes, I know exactly what that means. I know that the two means this because this is what the rubric identified. And it was just such powerful data that she had on that student immediately when that student entered that school. So, but we are there, we're there with math, but we're not there in other subject areas yet. But we'll get, we're going to get there.
Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions? Thanks, Michelle and Melissa and Colleen, thank you so much. It's very informative, exciting. Okay, we are going to go to the law enforcement officials and school resource officers discussion and possible first reading. So, is there any discussion? Yes, do you want to lead us off on that?
Yeah, I can just get us started. So of course, as we've talked about tonight, school safety is an all of the above issue. One powerful tool that we have in Eau Claire is our longstanding school resource officer program. The policy that you see before you tonight has not been revised since 2000. Our committee has been working on this for a little over six months now. And all of us on the committee felt that it was important to incorporate the voices of not only the regular entities, but also other stakeholders in the public and community organizations. Internally, as a district, we sought feedback and received it from our building principals at all levels, as well as students and the parent advisory council. And we also sought and received feedback in the community from the Chippewa Valley ACLU Board, the uniting bridges board, and members of Jona. And also we received feedback to aid us in our policy from the sheriff's department, the state public defender's office, and the DOJ Office of Justice Assessment. And finally, we had a public forum on March 12th, which 58 community members attended and shared comments to assist us in the draft. Our main partner in the policy revision work has been the Eau Claire Police Department. And they've of course been important longstanding partners with our district. And we have in the audience tonight, two folks from the Eau Claire Police Department. We have Deputy Chief Matt Rolkus, if you want to wave, and we have Sergeant Andy Wise, if you want to wave too. And these are two great individuals that we've really enjoyed working with and learning a lot from each other, I think, through this process. And they'll be available as we talk about this tonight, if we have any questions specific to the police department. And hopefully we're able to talk through this and maybe have a first reading. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Joe. I, I want to say, I think for the board that we really appreciate all the work that has gone into this to get a, a good policy that covers all the bases. So is there any discussion? What is your pleasure about doing a first reading tonight? Everybody good with that? It's going to take a little while. So I'm going to have everybody read because it's so long and we might go to sleep if one person reads. So if, Joe, why don't you start us off and recognize the values in the governing part? And then everybody take a paragraph or two, as long as you want it to read. And then we'll just go around, go down the row.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I know in the past, we've, the highlighted has been new for the purposes of tonight. As you read, the red text is all new as, and the black that's not crossed out is existing. But yeah, we're going red instead of highlighted this time. I think because it's the majority of it, so. And we don't want you to go blind with the highlight. Okay. The Eau Claire Area School District recognizing, recognizes the following values and governing principles which guide this board policy. Public education is essential to the well-being of individuals, families, and communities. For students to access and assimilate a public education, they must feel safe at school. Clearly defined roles, responsibilities, reporting protocol, decision-making processes, and resource allocations are essential. SROs play a key role in establishing positive supports for students and families. The SRO is a trusted member of staff. Students who are facing behavioral challenges or engaged in minor criminal activity are most likely to benefit from positive behavioral interventions and supports in accordance with policy 447. Access to adults who mentor and guide them and additional counseling and/or supports rather than arrests and/or exclusion from school. It is essential that both parties are able to distinguish between disciplinary misconduct, which is handled by administrators and staff, and illegal conduct, which may be handled by law enforcement. When possible, the board supports a restorative approach to discipline that involves all parents, all parties in the process of settling the offense. Restorative practices involve the victim, offender, and the community in search of solutions that promote repair, reconciliation, and reassurance. Meaningful engagement of all stakeholder groups, including students, families, and educators from diverse backgrounds is essential to school safety, collaborative cultures, and positive school climate. And then, and I suppose I'll just read page one and then we can each read one page. Okay. So the last bit of this page. Definitions: Interview, questioning of an individual by a police officer related to a criminal investigation. Non-custodial interview, questioning by a police officer of a student who is not detained and not expected to be detained. A student shall be advised that he slash she is not detained, does not have to talk if he or she does not wish, and can leave anytime he or she wishes. Custodial interview, questioning by a police officer of a student who is detained by police officers. A student shall be informed of his or her constitutional rights by the investigating officers, and these rights shall be given full consideration by the investigating officers.
Child rights, rights conferred on a minor by the Constitution of the United States, the Wisconsin Constitution, state and federal statutes, and by confirming court decisions and precedents. As a matter of law, parents, guardians, school administrators, and other third parties can neither waive nor assert a child's rights. The minor can however waive or assert those rights at any time. Police officer and law enforcement officer. All officers of the federal, state, and local governments charged with the duty and authority for law enforcement and the conducting of official investigations in connection therewith. School resource officer, SRO. School resource officers support and facilitate the educational process by providing a safe and secure environment through building and establishing meaningful relationships with students, staff, and families. SROs proactively interact with the school community to ensure the enforcement of city and state laws, preservation of public order, protection of life, and prevention, detection, or investigation of crime. SROs work effectively with students' families, school personnel, and community agencies to support safe teaching and learning in the schools in accordance with the ECSD and the Eau Claire Police Department policies. While authorized to act independent of school district policy in response to criminal conduct or an immediate threat, the SRO is not typically the primary responder or investigator of disciplinary investigations or behavioral issues that arise on a school campus or at a school-sponsored event. Continue?
Yeah, do all pages.
Okay, sure. Law enforcement officials in the schools. The district recognizes that collaboration between law enforcement agencies and the district is necessary for the protection of students and employees, for maintaining a safe environment in district schools, and for safeguarding all school property. At the same time, the district recognizes its responsibility to protect the educational process and to provide for the concerns of parents, guardians regarding the welfare and rights of their children. Law enforcement officials may be called to the school when district officials have reason to believe that unlawful conduct may have occurred in situations that threaten the safety of students, employees, or the public, or when the expertise of law enforcement is required, for example, to conduct a search for suspected weapons possession. In these situations, law enforcement and school district officials shall work together to conduct necessary investigation efforts, including conducting student interviews in accordance with board policy and established procedures. Law enforcement-initiated student interviews and investigations concerning conduct not related to school shall generally not be conducted on school premises, except as provided in this policy in the case of emergencies, including a belief that a student has information regarding imminent or ongoing criminal activity requiring immediate conduct, or as specifically required by law, including consistent with, okay. Terms of any judicially issued warrant. That's okay.
We can just fix that.
I think, it's just the elimination of including.
We'll pretend you didn't read it.
Yeah. School resource officer, SRO. Selection of SROs. Working with the Eau Claire Police Department, building principals, one parent guardian, and an executive team member, shall, shall be involved in identifying the knowledge, skill, and disposition criteria for SRO candidates and in the selection of new school resource officers.
Training of SROs. The ECSD shall work with the ECPD to provide opportunities for any new school resource officer to go through training on the following topics. Knowledge of Eau Claire community core values and district strategic plan, mission, and vision. Child and adolescent development. Ability to interact appropriately with students at all levels. Cultural competency, implicit bias, i.e. race, ethnicity, immigration status, LGBTQ status, socioeconomic status. Knowledge of federal and state disability, anti-discrimination, and special education laws. Knowledge of ECSD reporting, including seclusion and restraint policies. Knowledge of positive behavioral supports, strategies, and interventions. Knowledge of student rights, confidentiality, and privacy. Knowledge of trauma-informed practices. Training in de-escalation techniques and nonviolent crisis intervention. Responsibilities of SROs, law enforcement as told by them and shared with school administrators. School-based mental health awareness. The school district shall identify resources available to SROs and school staff, some of which may be from state and national organizations that facilitate professional development opportunities. SRO access to student records. A SRO must contact a building administrator in order to obtain access to student records, which are not law enforcement unit records maintained by the school. Student records include a student's attendance and contact information. Student grades shall not be made available to SROs under any circumstance. A SRO who seeks to access pupil records aside from the officer's agency's own law enforcement unit records may be provided access only as permitted by law and only after providing certification in writing to a school official that any records provided will not be further disseminated by the SRO. SRO interviews. It is the role of the school administration to investigate school-based issues and to determine when the assistance of the SRO is appropriate. SROs shall not act as a school disciplinarian. Disciplining students is a responsibility of school personnel in accordance with policy 447, student discipline, and positive behavior interventions. School administrators may request the assistance of the SRO in an investigation and consult the SROs in the event the administrator has reason to believe a circumstance exists that negatively impacts the school and/or learning environment. In the event that law enforcement officials and/or SROs intend to interview a student on school premises during the day, the officer shall confer with the building principal or designee, unless an emergency circumstance arises where there is risk of harm to the health or safety of the student or others. If this occurs, the law enforcement official and/or SRO shall notify the principal or designee as soon as practicable. In consultation with the SRO, a school administrator may attend student interviews when necessary and appropriate. If a student is interviewed by law enforcement officials without a parent or guardian or administrator present, the principal or designee shall explain the circumstances for this and place it in the student's file. Shall we move on? If a request for a student interview?
If a request for a student interview is denied by the building principal or designee, they shall state the reason for such denial. Law enforcement officials and/or SROs may request review of that decision by the superintendent. SRO accommodations for students. The SRO may work with an interpreter service to accommodate students who speak English as a second language and/or students with disabilities. Notification of parents, guardians prior to interview. Prior to any interview of a student who is the victim, witness, or complainant, except in case of an abuse situation, or if the student is believed to have information relative to an imminent threat or criminal activity, the SRO or principal shall attempt to contact the parents, guardians, unless otherwise requested by the officer, the principal, or the principals, or in the principal's absence. Their designee may sit in, on the interview. If contacted, a student's parent guardian may be permitted to attend the interview at the discretion of the principal. There may be situations where parents, guardians are not permitted to attend such interviews for law enforcement and the principal believed that this would impair the investigation. Interviews of students in schools related to abuse and neglect. Any contact with parents, guardians in an abuse or neglect case shall be made by human services or law enforcement, law enforcement officials. Governing law. Assuring all law enforcement contact with students is handled consistently with the student's legal rights, including constitutional protections, Wisconsin law governing, custodial interview of minors, and any other legal requirements governing the interaction between law enforcement officials and juveniles is the sole responsibility of the law enforcement official. Immigration status. The Eau Claire Area School District and Eau Claire Police Department shall not collect or provide information regarding the immigration status of district, of district students. SROs shall not have a role in the removal of undocumented students.
Compliance and allegations of misconduct by law enforcement officers and SROs. The Eau Claire School District and Eau Claire Police Department welcome inquiries and complaints about questionable performance, actions, policy, or procedures relating to the school resource officer program. The SOR, oh, SRO program shall set forth a simple and straightforward mechanism for any student, parent, guardian, teacher, principal, or other school administrator to submit a complaint orally or in writing of perceived abuse or misconduct by SROs. One, parent guardians shall be permitted to submit a complaint in their native language in accordance with the Eau Claire Police Department Policy 1008. Personnel complaints. The policy and complaint procedural is available online at, yeah, I don't have to read that. Second, complaints to the district shall be investigated and involved, resolved in a timely manner. And complaints shall be furnished with a written explanation of the investigation and resolution. Three, if requested, the district shall provide for a independent investigation Three, if requested, the district shall provide for a independent investigation through Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction into the allegations in the complaint. Four, where allegations of abuse or misconduct are raised, the O'Clare School District and the O'Clare Police Department shall investigate and work to resolve the issue in the best interest of the students and the learning environment. Five, where allegations of abuse or misconduct are substantiated, the O'Clare School District and the O'Clare Public Police Department shall consider the appropriateness of their assignment as an S R O. Six, every student, parent, or guardian in the school system shall be informed of the complaint procedural in parent/student handbook. Seven, any complaints against an O'Clare police officer may be referred to the O'Clare and Fire Commission in accordance with Wisconsin statutes. Me... Sure. Thank you. Teamwork.
Memorandum of Understanding, M O U. The O'Clare School District and City of O'Clare Police Department shall maintain a memorandum of understanding for the School Resource Officer Program. The M O U shall be reviewed on at least an annual basis. Accountability reporting. With assistance from the O'Clare Police Department and the S R Os, building principals shall collect, maintain, and share data as requested on the following. One, students arrested, ticketed, or otherwise receiving formal contact by an S R O or other member of law enforcement on school property. That information shall include the A, type of offense, and if the case was referred for charging; B, name of student; C, information on the daily interactions a S R O has with students and school staff. Two, the data shall capture activities that describe what a S R O does on a typical day. This information may be used to evaluate program efficacy. Data regarding the Student Resource Officer Program shall be reported annually to the school board. Survey slash community input. School and community climate surveys shall contain questions related to the S R O program. Policy review. This policy shall be reviewed annually by the O'Clare Police Department and O'Clare Area School District. Okay, and then we have all the cross-referencing underneath. Is there anything, any questions anybody has? Okay. Well, we'll probably bring that back. Did you have a comment? Oh, okay. Anybody have a comment on this? Would our police officers like to make a comment? Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Can I just ask a quick question? Oh, Mark Glings, E one seven four five zero. Can I read the... My quick question is, we have hundreds of students that are high schools that are eighteen and older, and this had a lot of discussion about, you know, minors and parents and stuff like that. Through an eighteen-year-old person's lens, does this read differently? And would it ever apply differently? And should, if it applies differently, should that be represented in some way in either this policy, like a sub-policy, or something like that? So, just wondering clarification.
I can't answer that, so I would assume Joe or one of the policemen.
All I can say is that we talked about it as a committee, in the sense of that we do have... I recall that we talked about it, you know, if there's a student who's an adult, and I know that we talked about it specific to, like, what kind of communication is sent out to a student, or what are they made aware of when they turn eighteen? So, I know we talked about that as a committee, but I don't think that we discussed putting it in the policy. I think it was more operational, but I... If people think we should add something, I'd...
I guess I would like to know what the students' understanding of S R Os are, and how they function in the school, and who gives that information? Does the principal? Does the S R O have a session where they talk to all the students? Do the students have? Or the policeman?
Well, at the beginning of each year, we have, like, the freshman orientation, so I think it's a good place for that. Could be that, or we do have, at the beginning of the year, we also have each grade level have a meeting with the building principal. So, we have a meeting with Mr. Volk every year at the beginning of the year. That'd be a great time to do it.
Is that what happens?
I've never seen that happen, though.
The, um... I would just add, too, we, um... Parts of this policy that wouldn't apply to a student who's eighteen or older would be specifically, I mean, the pieces about child rights, where they can waiver, assert those rights, and pieces about that. So, we tried to make it all-accomplishing. So, parts of this policy will not apply for all students. It'll depend on their specific situation. I think to answer kind of what you're talking about, Catherine, with the student piece, that was probably some of the more interesting feedback that we received, is because we got student feedback as a committee, and we also heard in the forum, in the panel as well, but from that student feedback about how important that relationship is with the school resource officer, and that that's really the crucial part of them being there. So, that was really interesting for us, and we tried to... In the section, just talking about defining what an S R O is, who an S R O is, we hadn't really defined that as a district before, and so in doing that definition, we include a lot of that in there about that, their role in supporting safe teaching and learning in the schools through facilitating that environment, through relationships with students and staff, so.
My impression is that S R Os try to keep a low key and just build relationships with students. Am I right? Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Question. In the section for accountability reporting, towards the end, on letter B, information shall include the name of the student. I will request for you to include gender and race.
The, um... We... The... All I would say is, we did talk about that in committee, and the only reason we didn't say that is because if we have the name of the student, we already have that data. We don't need that from anyone else, because we have that in Skyward. So, we don't need them to additionally report it to us, because we will have it there. That's why we talked about it in the... At least, that's when we talked about it in committee. That's what I recall.
Commissioner, did you have anything else you wanted to say about that?
I would say that it would save time to consolidate the information in just one document. It doesn't hurt to add those items.
I think we would consolidate it in the... If I'm recalling correctly, when we had this conversation, we're asking that the... That they would collect this data, really on, like a snapshot on the spot of their interactions, and this adding those additional things that we can easily have at our disposal maybe would not be a good use of their time if we already have it, and we don't need them to necessarily look it up and add it when we were... We could just have that ourselves. So, but if people want to add it, we...
I recollect from the conversation that they were in agreement to collect that data, because they didn't organize it following race and gender.
Right. You just have the name. It's just connected to the name. It's about... So, we have the name. We have our... That's the... So, I'm definitely thinking about it.
Yeah, I'm requesting.
Okay. So, you just say, "name of the student," and...
Race and gender.
Name of the student, and the student's race and gender.
I gotta say, I'm not convinced we need to do that. But we can talk about it at our next board meeting with further discussion. Okay.
Oh, it's not edits. So, I guess for me, as a district committed to antiracism, I would think that one place you would want that to be significantly reflected is in an S R O policy. And so, there is language here. I guess it approaches the stance, but it doesn't quite get there for me personally. And I... So, what I propose, I would like to include something right away in the values and governing principles that is a statement of antiracism. And so, I looked for some language actually from police department, written by police departments, and I can offer some language now, or I can send it.
Yeah, because if you want to read it in the record...
See, that's my concern about putting race and gender.
Well, I'm thinking about the public forum and some things that participants... One thing that participants mentioned was that the research literature on S R Os is characterized by mixed findings. So, for example, there are higher rates of arrest of students of color in buildings with S R Os. An audience member mentioned concerns about the school-to-prison pipeline, and something that was not said explicitly, but that came out in conversations afterwards, and I want to say, actually, kind of led by some of the police officers who were there, is just acknowledging a history of police brutality perpetuated against people of color in the United States, and so that we have to acknowledge that history, and I think it necessitates that any contemporary policy is an antiracist policy. So...
Do you want to say?
Again, just something, just for initial reactions, we could say something like, "As a district committed to antiracism, S R Os assigned to the E C A S D will serve without prejudice, will not tolerate hate or bigotry in our school community or from other officers, will confront intolerance and report any such conduct without question or pause, and will pursue justice with compassion and respect the dignity of others." So, and that's kind of, again, thanks to an officer who recommended the Toronto Police Department and also San Francisco Police Department as possible models there.
Do you want to put it at the bottom, at the top, in the middle, where you think it would fit?
Um... I would put it as the very first item, but I would put it at the very first, as the very first value. That's me personally, but I guess it may flow after the very last bullet point about the stakeholders.
That's kind of what I thought when you were saying it. It's not what I thought.
Although I would, actually, that's my only other second suggestion here, is to change the word "including" to strengthen that language to something like "especially," or "particularly," or, you know, "especially students, families, and educators from diverse backgrounds."
Sure.
So...
Scanning that off, Patty.
I got the last part, but I impacted every detail. Can you make sure she has your wording, please?
Is everyone okay with putting that as the last bullet under the guiding principle, what she read? I'm like, if it is our... Because I'd like to see it as right, and it would cover all of it.
Yeah, of course.
So, we can have this house as individually considered, individual...
Yes. Yes. Okay. Okay. That's what we'll do. Individually considered resolution at the next board meeting. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm ready to move on if you are. So, the next item on our agenda is discussion of possible first reading of policy three forty-five point five, academic recognition system.
Oh, sure. Okay, so, this policy was brought up... Changing this was brought up by Commissioner Fager when she was still on the board to update this, and it led to the creation by our policy governance of a subcommittee, made up of students, teachers, counselors, principals, and others, to look at our academic recognition system in the district, and they came up with a pretty succinct policy, and there will be more specific rules that will be developed to implement that. But that's what you see here, and it's... And our two student representatives were a part of that, so thank you to them, and thank you to Jim Schmidt for being, kind of, leading that, and Patty Iverson for taking all the minutes for that group.
Would you care to read that?
And what was the part in there? You wanted one word added, because I'll... So, I'll make sure I read that into the minutes.
On the second paragraph, after academic achievement, include and growth.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone wants to add to it?
The only thing I thought about, would it... I don't know who, kind of, the user-friendliness of this policy, but would it help to define, just within the policy, what the district has for its... There's a Q and A about post-secondary readiness on the website, and would it help to have a sum... Just one small paragraph from that? It's telling what post-secondary readiness is. It clarifies that it's for, you know, four-year university, technical college, military, et cetera. You know, just when families see this, that they... I think there's some...
Just use this word?
Just that paragraph. Because I think there's some... Sometimes there's misunderstanding that post-secondary only means a four-year college.
We have statements various places. Yeah. We have statements various places that identify more than just four-year college. It can be, is whatever the student...
Can we say, "It is a vision of the school board to promote post-secondary success as defined in thing X for all students"? Because in figure out what...
Because it can be technical college, military, or, you know, there were four, I think, four of them.
What's the name? Do you know the name of that sheet? Is it a...
This was a... It's part of a whole narrative about post-secondary readiness on the webpage, and this part is a specifically Q and A.
I think we have it in some other policies, too.
So, um... Can we... Could we find, try to maybe find that after this meeting before next Monday, and then put those links at the bottom under the cross-reference? So, anyone... Maybe that's the best place to put it, then. So, anyone who sees the document sees it there. Would that work?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we can do that, then, before... Just have a cross-reference, so then people can pull up the definition quickly. Okay. All right. Do you... Is that... Is there anything else, people? Okay. "It is a vision of the school board to promote post-secondary success for all students. The school board values academic achievement and growth and recognizes students who have excelled during their high school careers. E C A S D will construct a loyalty system that honors academic achievement and growth through multiple measures. The Executive Director for Teaching and Learning will oversee the development of the E C A S D loyalty system and its criteria."
Any comments from the audience? Okay. Seeing none. Are we ready to put this on the agenda for next time with this addition that Lori has suggested? Okay. All right. Are there any requests for future agenda items? I would like to get the agenda-setting meeting decided tonight. I talked to Chris today, and she... Who is our person? She and I, and I don't know about Dr. Hardback, are available between nine-thirty and eleven-thirty on Wednesday or Thursday morning.
Thursday's better for me, so I'm not available on Wednesday.
Okay. Thursday morning, is that going to work for you?
I just want to make sure we have time, because the agenda will have to be prepared the next day.
I know, yeah. What time? What, what about you, Thursday morning? After three.
Could you do that?
Yes, I can.
I'm with the Northwood staff about the principal vacancy.
So...
Friday's a holiday, I just thought of that, so...
Oh, it's a holiday?
Friday.
Well, can we, let's see, what was Wednesday morning for you? You had...
You know, if you have, if you have another morning that you can make it, I mean, I'm comfortable with you going ahead with the agenda, and then if there's something that needs to be tweaked or something, we could do it by email.
What would Wednesday morning like? Yeah. Meeting's adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.